Welcome Woodbury to the Village Board Meeting, May 11th. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Regents? And I'm all in silence for the victims of the Allen, Texas mall shooting. I pledge a regents
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Did you bring Danish? Any pastries?
No.
Climate Smartass was. Alright, so before we begin, I'll start by introducing your village board. To all the way to my left is trustee Christopher Graziano. Next to him, making his triumphant return to in-person meetings, is trustee Nick Corelli. On special assignment, and we congratulate her on her daughter's graduation, trustee Cerreali is not with us tonight. Sit next to me. And replacing village clerk Poppen and deputy clerk Jessica McLennan, is clerk Claudia
Is there a stone above?
There you go. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, couple comments on gender items only. So you have Please go to the podium, introduce yourself, and speak. To accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on April 27, 2023.
Motion.
Second. Alright, you two will have to arm wrestle. I will give it to Vic for others since he returned. All in favor? Deputy clerk Claudia Romanson, please read extract 21.
Abstract 21 contains lots of 222150-222233 and totaling $192,507.94.
Can I please have a motion in a second to approve extract 21 as ready?
Motion. Second. They give it to Vic.
No. Give it to Vic again. All in favor?
Vic gets them all.
No. We missed it.
Yes.
The room just smelled like different, like it wasn't that smell of Bengay and plum juice that we normally used to. Alright, fire pong equipment request. Can I have a motion in a second to approve fire pong equipment requests? 15 of 2023 totaling approximately $14,947.54 for the purchase of movable glove racks and tri-band radios for car five and CP2.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Turner building permit. So can I now have a motion in a second to approve the return of the $115 building permit fee paid by Leslie Flores Nezna, less a $25 processing fee as recommended by the building inspector?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application for membership. So it gives me great pleasure to announce that we have two new applications to the Woodbury Fire Department. So can I please have a motion in a second to accept the application for junior membership to our Woodbury Fire Department to Gian Fronza and Kama Shilla?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, there you go. Alright, now my favorite part of the meeting. So can I please have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, and the village clerk to sign the 2023-2024 collection warrant?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to all business. So we have a discussion decision on introductory local law 6 of 2022 entitled Farm Distilleries. So attorney Norton, would you just kind of briefly explain the changes based on planning board comments and our consultant, our traffic consultant?
Yes. So we talked a little last week, the planning board had some comments, and then recommended some consultation with our traffic engineer. So the modifications that we made were located in section 31040 for off-street parking. Now the number of spaces is one space per 200 square feet gross floor area of farm distillery buildings, or one space per three attendees permitted on the property, whichever is greater, to take into account any concerns with any outdoor tasting facilities like that that the traffic engineer may recommend. Just one further comment is if you're going to take actions tonight, you need to complete the secret, so you need to issue a thing of your declaration.
So at this time, any members of the board having a comment or actually questions for attorney Norton?
No.
Any comments on local law 6 before I do law?
No.
Okay, so can we start by a motion in a second to issue a net debt on local law 6?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, can I have a motion in a second to adopt local law 7 of 2023, amending chapter 310 zoning of the village code to include provisions for the farm distilleries and to direct the village clerk to print a copy of the local law in these minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, vocal? Romanson?
Vocal. Joseph Graziano?
Aye.
Joseph Corelli?
Aye.
Joseph Verne?
Aye.
Manor, Mr. Fronza?
He deserves it, Tony. He deserves it.
Aye. Alright, congratulations. We now have, we now allow distilleries in Woodbury access. Good news.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Okay, so Adam Street, let's discuss this. So the bid open was held on May 2nd at 2:00 p.m. for approval to the Adam Street building. The notice was printed in a time travel record on March 29, 2023, and the following bids were received. So Premier Building and base bid was $392,000. The alternate one was $39,300, and alternate two was $53,800. Bingo Builders LLC, their base number was $114,000. Alternate one was $46,000, and alternate two was $30,000. And Wall Hill Group, their base bid was $517,000. The alternate for alternate one was $60,000, and alternate two was $66,666,000. So you think you would just change that number up just a smidgen? Okay, village architects, Linscombe, McCormick, and Van Wardens, no relation to Jason Van Wardens, are recommending the project be awarded to Premier Building and Construction Management. The amount budgeted for the project was $430,000, and the total project with both alternates is $445,800. So at this time, what I'd like to do is proceed with the base bid and alternate one. At this time, I will let the board know that I have Bobby Blair looking into whether we even need to do alternate number three, which alternate number three was for plaster work on the outside of the building. So at this time, I'd like to table that and approve of the base bid and alternate number one for Premier Building and Construction Management.
Alternate number one is the mezzanine?
Is, yes, that's the mezzanine.
Okay.
So at this time, can I have a motion in a second to award the project to Premier Building and Construction Management for a total cost of $431,300?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I know it's nice to put that behind us.
How many years later?
I know, I know. Alright, scheduled public hearing moratorium waiver from Meehan. So can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at 7:30 p.m. on May 25, 2023 to entertain public comments on application received from Alfonso Alfons Meehan requesting relief from local law five of 2022, moratorium on issuance of certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals for a property located in Tanger, Grand willing.
And just for the board to know, this application is currently pending before the ZBA. This is one of the applicants, the applications that your resolution for exemptions of the board moratorium do permit you to proceed with waiving the fee in the public hearing if you so choose.
Okay. So at this time, can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing for May 25? Because we can waive all that at that meeting?
You can waive all that, I think.
Okay.
It's up to the board, I just wanted to let you know that this was one that you have the option for.
So at this time, let's just schedule the public hearing, and then we'll wait till the next meeting. That way we can hear from the applicant and then decide from there. So motion in a second, please?
Motion. Second.
Vic and deputy mayor here, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Another moratorium waiver request for loss. So can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at 7:30 p.m. on May 25, 2023, to entertain public comments on an application received from Cilio Ross requesting relief from local law five of 2022, moratorium on issuance of certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals for property located at six Carroll Court.
Hold on, timeout, we lost, we lost the meeting again.
Yeah, I got a problem with the internet.
There's something going on with the internet.
Yeah, I got dropped too.
Everybody may have to take a timeout. If I had that little Jeopardy music, I'd play it, but I don't.
Alpha, Alpha.
Please, please go.
Having technical difficulties. The internet's really wonky.
You just seen it.
It's wonky.
I got it.
There you go. Okay, good to move on. So can I have a motion in a second to
Who did she nominate? Thank you.
Alright, can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to Cilio Ross on May 25, 2023?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That particular meeting, I think we have six public hearings that night?
Yep.
Why not?
I know, as I said, I pack a blanket, meal. Anyway, alright. So moving right along, New York State Unified Soul Permit. So can I have a motion in a second to adopt the following resolution as provided on our website and to be printed at end of these minutes, adopting the New York State Unified Soul Permit allocation form and procedures as recommended by the Climate Smarting Task Force and reviewed by our building inspector Mike Fannella?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, request for legislation support, perm. Correspondence has been received from perm, the village, the village's workers' compensation hearing. Requesting the village request Senator Stupis and Assemblyman Igges to sponsor and support Assembly Bill 8.52A and Senate Bill S.6410. This legislation would allow public entities to join public insurance groups as a way to lower their costs and better maintain their public employee risks, also to reduce the cost of that coverage by allowing deductible options regulated by the workers' compensation board. So saying all that, can I now please have a motion in a second to support this legislation and authorize me, the mayor, to send a letter to Senator Stupis and Assemblyman Igges requesting they support and sponsor the legislation for the current legislative session?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Introductory local law 11. Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to introduce local law 11, amending chapter 277, taxation of the village code to provide for the tax on utilities?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now can I have a motion in a second to refer this local law to the village clerk treasurer for comments?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing not to be held on May 25, but on June 8, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. to entertain public comment on this local law?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you CJ.
Thank you CJ. Alright, well thank you Kelly Norton for putting it together.
Kelly.
Looking split. Alright, on to discussion, the idea of hiring an in-house engineer. So if anybody has actually followed what the village is doing, you will notice that we have a lot of projects going on here in Woodbury, predominantly within our water and sewer department, but we've always got a lot going on, and we just have to go over once. A few years back, the village board under Mike McLennan's leadership had attempted to hire somebody in-house to serve as our engineer. I think, and I've discussed this with the clerk Poppen, and it may be advantageous for us to look into hiring an in-house engineer. So just for the record, this would be an employee, a consultant, and it would be hired through civil service. We would have to do this through civil service, similarly to the binary method. We must list, see if there's anybody on there. If there is nobody on there, then we can move forward, unless eventually they do produce a list for engineer. So I think that it's worth looking into. It would save the village a significant amount of money, but it would also save any person that puts in an application in front of the planning and zoning boards, also a significant amount of money. So, starting with you, trustee Graziano, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'd support this 100%. We have, with the new regulations coming down, we're gonna have more and more projects that we're gonna have to do. And having a dedicated engineer to just quarterback the consultant engineers and give Mickey a hand, I mean, that's something that Mickey shouldn't have to do. And so if we had somebody that was an engineer that could coordinate with all the outside engineering groups that we have that are doing our different projects, and have that person be that quarterback, then that would make things go a lot smoother and a lot faster. I think we'd get these jobs done a lot quicker.
I also think for the planning board?
The planning board, zoning board, but project coordination is law. That's why, I mean, somebody who's responsible for that. I'm 100% in favor.
Trustee Corelli?
I agree with trustee Graziano. It's gonna save the village money, which is a big plus, but in addition to that, it's gonna speed things up. It's gonna have somebody on staff, and you don't have to wait for them to get around and do something because they're tied up someplace else. We have somebody that can do it, go look at it, and it's, trustee Graziano said, work with the other businesses that are involved and get things done best and smooth. I'm for it.
Trustee here?
Yes, I'm 100% for this, considering everything that's coming our way, water, but also development wise.
Yeah.
If you look at the projects before, the planning board now, that will come for that, once the moratorium was, back with a vengeance, we're gonna be overwhelmed and inundated with just having to move things forward. So having somebody on staff, I think, is worth every penny. In addition to saving the money, I think that when you do the cost benefit analysis, you're actually saving probably 50% of what we currently pay between the escrow accounts through the planning board and zoning board, and also what we pay from the village budget. So I think it's really an over.
Yeah.
We're too big of a municipality not to have our own consulting myself.
I think it's been a long time coming. I think with the projects like you mentioned, trustee Eric, the transit oriented development, the shops in Woodbury, the hotels on Turner Road, there is just so much that
Turner Road, how about the comments?
That I would get that, get that. Phase five of the comments. One of my miss in senior housing. So there is a lot that is going on development wise, but then in terms of what we have going on here, it's just crazy. So hearing the board. Can I get a motion in a second to authorize the village clerk to add a position to our employment census with the county and to request said list on the county for engineer?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen of the public, that concludes village business for this evening. At this time, we will go out to the public, and I will start with the first row. Go ahead, state your name, and then fire away.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Harmoni, and I am here as a concerned citizen who recently came across some very disturbing information on AuditNY.com, which is the website of New York Citizens Audit. They are a nonpartisan, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) citizen education group formed for the purpose of performing an open audit source order of the New York State Board of Elections. The Ruins Deficits Report was unnatural and obvious manipulation of the voter database in the New York State 2020 general election, rendering the election uncertifiable, and whoever certified that election actually committed perjury. The findings were taken from the New York State Board of Election voter rolls, county voter rolls, and the New York State Secretary of State's official website. Every New Yorker, regardless of the political affiliation, should be very alarmed by the information contained in this 16-page report which can be found on AuditNY.com. I will now link to you a summary of the citizens' report. Three basic tenets of an election. One, voter rolls must be accurate. Two, votes counted must be from qualified voters. Three, the number of votes must equal the number of voters. Findings. 2.4 million New York State voter ID numbers were attached to 1.17 million registers. 987,000 voters registered on January 1st from 19, the year 1900 to 2021. 1.9 million registrations in the state voter rolls went missing from the county rolls. 625,000 more registrations than voting age citizens in just six counties. 740,000 ineligible votes statewide. 338,000 more votes cast than voters who voted in 2020. And 195,000 votes cast in New York City that went missing in the New York State voter database. Conclusion. Over 1 million felony violations of New York State election law. 95 state and federal legislative races impacted by 740,000 ineligible votes. The New York State Board of Elections, whether by dereliction of duty or deliberate malfeasance, is unquestionably responsible for effective election outcomes in New York. A full end-to-end audit by professionals and possibly law enforcement is warranted. Data sources used, New York State Board of Elections voter rolls provided on October 21, 2021. County voter rolls, although not all counties have responded to FOIL requests. And the New York State Secretary of State's official website. This data information has been provided to state and federal officials, Attorney General, Secretary of State, State Board of Elections, Inspector General, FBI, New York State Police, who passed it on to the Foreign Intelligence Task Force, state leadership of Democrat and Republican parties, county election officials, sheriffs, and district attorneys. So far, New York Citizens Audit has been met with indifference and inaction. They are asking for your help, bottom-up pressure from towns, villages, and cities through their resolution and petition. This will put pressure on the New York State Legislature, who are currently working on a vote. It is our right, guaranteed under the First Amendment of the Constitution, to petition our government for redress of grievances. It is a sworn duty of every New York official to investigate all of these discrepancies. Our voter database and ballots are a critical part of our election infrastructure. Our state and national security, along with our individual civil rights to free and fair elections hangs in the balance. We understand that a local municipality does not legislate to the county. However, your constituents voted for you to do their voices. Our voices are not being heard. Concerned citizens are bringing the deficits reported in resolution to their towns, villages, and cities all across New York State, asking their local officials to support this end-to-end audit of the New York's 2022 midterm election. And as of today, I'm happy to say 13 towns have signed up for the resolution, and more are on the way. We know the situation is not a board doing, nor does the board have the authority to correct it. We are asking you, as our local representatives, to adopt this resolution with a vote of yea for a complete end-to-end audit of the New York State 2022 midterm election. Doing so will help push it further up the line to the state legislature where it can be rectified. It is the only way New York State voter rolls can be corrected now, and with citizen oversight, remain that way in the future. Should you have any further questions relating to the data that I am going to give you, please go to info@auditny.com. That's info@auditny.com. I will now give you the resolution, the deficit summary, and other pertinent information for your review. And with this, I am hereby asking the elected board members of the Village of Woodbury for her support on this most crucial matter and further decisions by the next schedule will begin on May 25. I thank you for opportunity, well, or the next one after that. But the 25th would be nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the first row?
And I have one for Susan?
I can give it to you. Thank you. Anyone else in the first row? Second row. Introduce yourself and tell us why you joined us here at the third row.
Hi, I'm Nancy Sowera. And I'm here to speak on, in my community, but it will impact most communities in Woodbury. So when you had a, you know, this highlight statement, the developers started out, they presented to the town of Woodbury an awesome plan, and that plan included purpose and use of the community. One of those were single-family homes. Those homes being primary dwellings for homeowners and the homeless. Today, we have businesses, places of worship, daycare's, air views, other types of businesses. One is so old that took, filed for the COVID relief funding for aid and receiving to the address. So this activity, which is totally not what the community was designed for, is creating a hazard for the residents. Fire safety, children's safety, traffic issues. So my question is So my question is, there are two overland plan and it's regulation using bylaws of many people. And if these businesses are there, these homes are being used for these other purposes. I'm thinking that they were approved by the town or someone for these purposes and what, which sort of who is
So you have businesses, home businesses, SDRs, so on and so forth. Has anybody filed a complaint with the building department? Should have got a form with the building department because it would have been nothing, no businesses approved.
It's not a commercial question.
Yeah, it's not a commercial, and we wouldn't have approved an SDR since we are not allowed them as a yet. So that would be a tier one issue. But the only way we can respond is if somebody is actually filing a complaint. It's a complaint form online and then tells the building inspector, hey, we've got this going on here. Then at least he can investigate. And either say, I've got nothing, or proceed accordingly. But unless I have something to go from, there's nothing I could really do. So I know that we've had a couple of things that the building inspector has dealt with up there in the past. But if you've got, like I said, SDRs up there that you're aware of and where they're at, then I need a form pulled out and it needs to be sent to the building inspector. If you've got a business operating out of the home or a daycare out of home or something of that nature, then I need to know. The only way I'm going to know that is if you file a complaint.
So we approve also where not, the village is not the enforcer of the offering plan?
Yes.
That's HOA, that's why I didn't bring up the offering. Because it's a civil matter.
Yes.
What's in your Bible? What is your Bible said? Because that's your government of us.
It doesn't allow for, there are single-family homes, people living there, not businesses.
It says it's not allowed for, then that's where you enforce it through your HOA board and your property management for a time being. And in your ways within the Bible, New York State has ways for an HOA to enforce those. It's not easy, but it can be done.
But the village itself cannot enforce the HOA's Bible, that's the issue.
But that's why I stopped to, what would be against our
A business is different.
And that's really something I can, has a damage for it.
So because this is a private community, they would just, you know.
We can only adjudicate village court. That's it. Any other individual, private Bible, code, whatever else you have in place, that's not part of the HOA that develops it. It's a civil matter. It cannot be enforced legally, can it? If you consider it by, in this one, it doesn't allow that.
Not even for fire safety and things like that?
It has to violate village court.
Well, no, if it's fire safety.
If it's a village
That's village court, right.
If it's a life safety issue, we can, but again, you would have to complain. Somebody would have to wage a complaint saying, I see forty kids going into this house for daycare with proof, because then if challenged in court, which it will be, the building inspector has to prove that there was a complaint made, that, you know, people have been stalking the residents or anything like that, otherwise how would, he can't be everywhere every day, right? So that's why we're, if it's really that troublesome to the community and you really do think there's a life safety issue, I would encourage you or someone, whoever's complaining about it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Anyone else in row two? Two? Okay, the back row. Maria, you're on.
I'm on.
You are on. You've got a parade coming up.
Oh, my God. Well, I know, buddy Marshall. May twenty-eighth, Sunday. Parade will start, step off at one o'clock on Bond Street, go north on thirty-two. We have two stops, one at Old Globe, Central Valley, and the second stop is right across the street at Victory Park on Island Mills. Then if you're ready, proceed on to the cemetery in the back. There will be a service back there. We're asking all residents, please come out, stand alongside the road. Remember those who have given their service to the country. And this year, our brand marshal is still Morello, who has done parade for thirty-eight years, twenty of those years as chairman. And he graciously has handed that baton over to me, so it's a great, big honor to do that. And I've got marching band, light band, two DJs. And we have some light entertainment in the gazebo here from one o'clock until three, passes by. And then it'll be one of our residents, our old friend and his partner, that we have some music here at this road. We set it to get the community together while they're waiting for us to come, go up the thirty-two. I think that's it.
Your journal is closed, right?
The journal, the journal is closed, is actually in print right now. So I should hopefully have something by the weekend to hand out. Some people are going to back down, so people want to be in, so I apologize if your name is not in there, but we did the best we could with getting the journal together. And the only other thing is I was asked by a family member, he's going to be sending pictures hopefully to Mike or to actually to the real estate agents who have properties at the grasses like Yay High and not being bode in some businesses along thirty-two. So I know he's going to take some pictures and call the real estate agents himself. And I know the highway department doesn't call. An awesome job. Thursday, Friday, the fourth, they'll go clean the streets and do what they have to do. So I thank the village for helping out with this.
Thank you, Maria. Gives me great pleasure. Oh, anybody else in the third row? Okay.
Sorry, so, um, Central Valley. I'm just wondering if there's been any discussion about the revitalization committee in the church of it?
No. No discussions. We've actually had discussions this week about the land preservation committee, but that's been the only discussion that I've had. So that's what I'm focused on right now. I had a meeting with Neil Cross this week, but that was the extent of it for a time being. Right now, we are addressing various other matters. So we'll, we'll keep you posted. Let's go sit with you.
Do you have the timeframe that you're looking? The whole thing from the, you know, number of
At this time, no. I would love to be able to give you a timeframe, but right now I, I've got that. So right now, like I said, I've had my meeting with Neil Cross with the revitalization committee, so it's not the revitalization committee, land pres, top review. And once I'm done moving forward with that, then we'll see what ends around because that, like I said, we're looking to hire an in-house engineer because we have that much going on. So for right now, we'll get to the revitalization committee at some point, but I'm just going to give you an actual answer at this point. That's the best I could tell you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Teresa. Now, gives me great pleasure to introduce Anthony Sagna, the Climate Smart Task Force.
Anthony was speaking, or is it?
No, no, it's Lisa. I know it's Anthony Sagna. I just figured, last time I forgot Anthony was here. He's so wild.
At the tree, right?
That's it, that's it.
We say it's Climate Smart Community Task Force. I wanted to thank the village board. You guys allowed us to plant a tree at the Central Valley Library and to also offer free saplings to the community. Some of them were red oak, native red oak, and then some pollinator bushes. And we got rid of all of the pollinator bushes. It was a wet day, or a day, we were there Saturday, the twenty-ninth. And we literally had our tents tie wrapped to any tree sun we could find. So we were wet and, but we were, yeah, a couple people come out. And what we didn't get with on the twenty-ninth, the Hennings Library so graciously let us stand in front on a beautiful day and give out the rest of the pollinator roses. And I still have some red oak saplings, very tiny little bare-baked saplings if anybody wants. But also the community task force, the Climate Smart has been very active with other, we attended the roundtable that was presented last night at the state level, county level, excuse me. And from there, we are anticipating and hopefully doing a farmer's market if we can get that going. I know it's late in the season, but even if we tackle something for the end of the season. And we have a huge goal of wanting to do table scrap not hosting, where we would have a drop-off location, people could drop off their food scraps. Restaurants could also participate. And so we were looking for a location to be able to do that. And I wanted to let everybody know that the library was very happy to participate and partner up with us. The kids, they have something every day at the Central Valley Library, a little to-go kit of crap. That was an environmental awareness crap. So everybody came out for that week of Thursday through Arbor Day. We did our community cleanup. Rob's not here despite his not wanting to. We wrangled in Rob White to host the community cleanup another year. So I think we doubled our participation from last year to this year, so hopefully it'll just get bigger and bigger. So people that came out, we thank you, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have notes from the roundtable that you can share?
So it was more, it was more of networking.
Okay.
There was more of a networking evening than the actual. I do have brochures and stuff that they handed out, but it was more to, I said at the table for open space, they have one on water conservation, and then they have one that was strictly of Climate Smart. Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention with the, with the resolution that you did today for our solar permits, that is our fourth resolution and our permit. So we are officially a clean energy community task force. So we're, since we will bring in five thousand dollars of grant, so.
Before you go, I just, on behalf of the board, and if anybody wants to chime in, I want to thank you. I cannot tell you how impressed I've been. You three moms.
Whoever.
You all have jobs, and Anthony Sagna. He said, he, he sustentates with dogs and Sean.
You guys are amazing.
You have done such an amazing job in such a short time.
Yeah.
It's, you know, we talked about this. I mentioned the trucks that came to you and immediately you go out and you've got receptacles in the same location that you've been, Anthony has been collecting them.
How much do we have already? What do we?
Five hundred and fifty.
Five hundred and fifty. So, and we still have five more months, so what do we average here? Five, about a hundred a month, so you need five hundred for every match, so we got the whole, we got swimming and free runs and benches too, so.
And I know that you, I had a talk with Miki about this to make sure everything is okay with the planting of the seeds all over at some of our pump stations. It came out completely wrong, but it was fully okay. But that was going to come out right, but.
So we are hoping to enact pollinator pathways. For people that don't know what that is, it's native wild seeds that are planted, native plants. Those are the best for our pollinators. And the idea is if I have a pathway, you have a pathway, then the pollinators don't have to travel as far to get food or stay path attack. And so the mayor has graciously given us some of the pump stations that we can go sprinkle wildflowers deep there. So as you start to see them, maybe look overgrown, bear with them, they will eventually have flowers. So there's a group of us that will be working on that the next two weekends or so. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa.
Lisa, a question, a next question?
I have both of them.
For me, um, yeah. So what is the, um, the bamboo, what is it, what does it do to
The Chinese, the Chinese bamboo? Yeah, so I don't know a lot about invasive species. I just know that one happens to be, I know you see a roadside and it grows very quickly. Too bad we couldn't come up with something to actually do with it that was productive. But it gets stuck on the mowers. And so as the town goes through or whoever goes through and mows, it gets stuck on the mower and then it finds itself in another location. It's to my understanding, the only way to rid yourself of it is to burn the roots. So by pulling it, you break it, you make it multiply. So it is, it's an invasive species. I would wish I had a better answer for how to get rid of it, but.
Tell you, don't cut it.
Don't cut it.
Because if you walk out barefoot, you will, it will go through your foot if it comes up out of the ground.
Oh, really?
Learn the harmony?
No, just, I know of this really.
The plants itself, the base that's left behind.
Yeah, people cut it off, and they grow in short feet, come out of the ground. If you were running around outside, it would go right through your foot.
Yeah, so.
You also want to be the contact, do you need a contact, Timber Ridge?
No, I don't know who that is.
I can give you, like I said, Tom Shankle, I think is that phase. It was, I don't remember what phase that she was. There's one phase that's handled by the HLE property manager and Brigadier's property manager, which I think is phase four.
Okay.
The other three phases are Tom Shankle.
Okay.
So I just don't know which phase that.
Where she was, yeah. So the mayor and I met a woman that is working in Timber Ridge to create a pollinator garden. And so we figured we would kind of join forces. We could give her some advice as to what type of pollinators to use. You know, a lot of people think just by going to Home Depot and buying a plant that a flower, a bee or a butterfly would come to, it's great. But here's something about the Home Depot and the Lowe's and all those type of stores. Those seeds and those flowers have been dipped in pesticide, herbicide. And so even though it's now a flower, it still has some of the residue from the pesticide to keep the seed from being eaten by bugs. And so it's a, it's a lose-lose. They look pretty, but they're really not assisting our pollinators, our bees, our butterflies, our hummingbirds to carry out the process we need for, you know, we were talking with Sully over, you know, he's our local beekeeper. And he said, you'd be surprised for the people that spray their lawns with herbicides or pesticides. So they look beautiful, but they're basically sterile pieces of property. They offer nothing to anybody, especially us who want to be able to grow any type of garden, anything, you know, even for our future of human conservation. So he was telling us, Sully was telling us, he has bees that go out to gorge at pollinator gardens and they come back full of pollen, he said, but because somebody has recently sprayed their garden for bugs or to keep the weeds away. And he says the bees literally die in the sand. With their, with their, like their tongues sticking out because they, you know. So it's, it's something to be aware of, you know, your yard may look beautiful, but it's sterile, so. Thanks.
We have residents getting seeds. Can you have them sent over to us or is there a few places to go? Can you post that somewhere? Because she's got
Central Valley Seed Company is really good.
It would be a big fundraiser. Yeah. And I know, and I know the seed packing for like two stones of these.
Right, currently, Central Valley Seed is out of stock for native, uh, New York State native plants, so I really try to, but. So you wouldn't want to get one that is not modified, just like your food, basically that's genetic, that's, you know, organic and not genetically modified, so.
So if not from there, where can you find them?
To buy them from, so I know like the Aubriedom is currently selling them, so just smaller, smaller farm stands, you know, where they grow within their own versus the big box stores, so.
I think Adams has one.
Adams, probably.
One more thing, I know you said the burn roots with the
Oh, yeah.
I know, there is a
Burning.
And I know in the village you can't do open burns, or you do like a controlled burn in a container, that's okay, right?
Yeah, just, I was going to say, don't go on burning everything.
No, 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 woods there. Look, maybe just, not like a separate
I want to see everybody out there with flamethrowers.
That's it. That's something that is helpful to let everyone else know because they don't realize there is a ban for ban, or, or whatever, right? Lowland.
I would recommend that you have an invasive species on your property that you want to get rid of. I would really recommend calling Cornell Property Extension and speaking to either their master barber services. They would be most helpful with how to get rid of an invasive species versus my lack of information here, another is helpful, but yes, yeah, definitely it's enough, so.
Except, but certainly like another avenue we really didn't think of. Is that if other HOAs in parts of the community want to do something, we have this Climate Smart Task Force that can provide advice, assistance.
It can help me with like
Exactly, exactly.
I think you just post it to your Facebook. I mean, like you've been doing, posting it.
Yeah, so it's me finding
Just share, because you, kind of, good social resource of information, thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak? All right, more comments. Mike Canelo, you joining us remotely?
Uh, no comment this evening, thank you.
All right, Nikki Phillips.
I got nothing this evening, thank you.
All right, there, thank you. And that ends the party, do you have anyone? No, sure. That's right, always makes the point to say something. Very good. All right, board comments, start off at the far end, trustee Pirelli.
All right, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, just wanna give you a couple of tips, and, and, as you see, we've been out flushing hydrants, so it's caused a little consternation among some people. It tends to discolor the water, but that's its purpose, believe it or not. Flushing the hydrants once a year helps keep the mains from divertulating, which means making them smaller and covered with water, so it, it gets the particulate out of the main before the busy season. So if you do happen to get some discolored water in your home, what I would suggest you do is go to the lowest point in your home and use cold water only and flush it till it's clean. Do not turn on your hot water, and do not go upstairs in the, in the third floor and turn on the tub there, because all it's gonna do is pull through your house or get it stuck in a hot water tank, you don't wanna, the hot water's the last thing you wanna turn on till the water's clean. So if you notice any discoloration in your toilet or anything else like that, go to a low area and, and flush at a low area until you, until you get clean water. The second thing is, the nice weather is now here again, and speaking of that, what I, we, we, we need to treat our water kind of judiciously this year, and make, you don't, nobody likes to continue to go into water restrictions every year, and I'll get to that in a minute, but we're doing some really good work getting some new water sources. However, if you're gonna water, water appropriately and kind of look at, you know, what, you know, they mentioned Cornell Cooperative, you know, my company has a really good partnership with them, and we do a lot of work with them, but if, if you look at what you're supposed to water, watering every day, or even every other day, doesn't technically, it's not an automatic thing, and it shouldn't be said and forgotten, it's not a Rhombol field type of thing with, with sprinkler systems, and, you know, you gotta take into account soil content, how much moisture you've had, how much rain you've had over the last whatever days, and it's just, just because of that, so that's kind of what you gotta really look at, and all that information's available online through, through all those things, so just water in, you know, judiciously, that's all I can say. So we can keep going up for everybody and not going into restrictions this year. They're getting a really good job, again, getting going, getting to do well, on track, and getting approval from the various government agencies that are always fun in New York to get approval from. So we're on, well, on our way with World Twelve. You will hear the word PFAS till you are sick of hearing the word PFAS eventually.
I'm leaving now.
But.
I'm sick of that word.
It's, unfortunately, it's something that has been in every single thing that everybody's used, built. If it slides, it slips, it's waterproof, or if something doesn't stick to it, it has a PFAS chemical in it. It's not even frying pans, if, the wrappers that they used to wrap the Big Macs in, that was slick, so they didn't stick to the Big Mac, had PFAS in it. Everything, they built, they put it in everything, waterproof, anything that was more actual waterproof was done with PFAS. Nobody knew, nobody understood, so it's everywhere, so it wound up everywhere. So it's gonna be, you're gonna find it in water supplies, they're starting to regulate it at lower and lower limits, so we're gonna have to go with as everyone else is and start treating for it. And some of our wells here, it's gonna be an added expense and reflecting water rates eventually, as we get these things online, but I wanna be completely a hundred percent transparent, let everybody know it's coming, because it's, it's needed and we're gonna have to treat for it. So that's part of what we're doing as well, and the water department and the engineering folks are doing a great job kind of getting that online and getting it cycled into a project that it can get welcome to put in in the next well, and then the PFAS treatment on an entire well field, so it doesn't have to be repeated, so it's, it's in much better shape. And if you wanna do any little conservation act, yeah, I'd be more willing to work, be on a water conservation program, I've designed them, I've, since two thousand sixteen.
I say yes. Yes, yes. I forgot to mention that we are doing the. Water, I said, I said, I'm.
Where is that one from?
So we're doing pre-orders, and then on the twentieth, we'll be delivering them at the Highland Mills Library, so we'd love to do a fraction for you, yeah.
All right, I'll give you some ideas, we can, we'll talk, and we're working on water conservation, because if you can protect the resource and, and have enough of it for everybody to go around and everybody to enjoy that resource, then that's what you wanna do. And that's all I have for that.
And I actually should have them come in and do a, which I can, I can, it shouldn't be the May twenty-fifth meeting, because we have.
No.
An update on the well, because it's been a while.
Yeah.
I'm getting, I'm getting very brief on that, but I think maybe if, maybe getting Bill in here, Bill Cannavan, and keeping him on a short time leash, there you go, maybe worth it. Trustee Pirelli, welcome back.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, either in person or online. I don't really have much, but I think a lot of you know, there was a decree issued yesterday for St. Patrick's Church, and it's kind of, I would imagine, kind of what we all thought, they're gonna have one mass a week starting on July first. And the only change in what was talked about prior is that they will now have baptisms there, a whole way with the. The other thing I want to credit, there's a fundraiser coming up for Knights Columbus on Saturday, Saturday, June tenth, they're holding a wrestling fundraiser, which is a lot of fun for kids, if you have small kids, grade school kids, they enjoy it. And we have a couple of wrestlers from Woodbury that, that wrestle, so they have a local forum. And other than that, that's, well, I have.
All right, thank you, trustee Pirelli. Deputy Mayor of York.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening and watching. One of the biggest challenges we face, and I say this every year as a community, is voter apathy, voter apathy. We are our own worst enemies when it comes to this, and when we choose not to educate ourselves. But more importantly, when we choose not to vote, we are a bigger enemy. And we choose not to vote a lot of times because we think our vote won't matter. We choose not to vote because we don't agree with any of the candidates who are running. Or we choose not to vote because we think we are too busy to care and believe it will be someone else's problem. So every year in May, I give this speech, because Tuesday is our school board's election. And there are three candidates up for what we re-election or election to begin with. That's crucial for our community that we show up, because every year, this is the lowest turnout of any election. And whether you have school age children or not, the school, keeping the integrity of our school in, in, in check is vital to the survival and flourishing of our community. So I don't care if you like the candidates or not, if you don't agree with the budget or not, you must show up and just show, have your voices be heard. Because it's, it's, like I said, it's vital to the survival of our community. And this year, the budget, you read the budget notification from the school board, it seems to be a zero tax increase due to the state aid that they've received, which is great. Just again, I don't care if you educate yourself now, tomorrow, or right before you vote, but please do so. And I think voting is from six AM to nine PM, so at some point, at least that's it about, and if the voice is heard. The second thing I just wanna mention, I think my daughter is listening right now, and I do this again also every year, next Thursday is her birthday. And she won't let me live it down, Lily, she's gonna be seven years old next Thursday, and I always tell her, since I've been a board member, how proud I am of her, of all the odds she's defied since she was born, this little tiny peanut at one pound fifteen ounces, this premature little, she looked like a doll when she was born, and she had a two percent survival rate. So anyone who has known her over the years, who has watched her grow and develop, and you know how resilient she is and how courageous she is. And her will is unmatched, and I pity the person in this world who talks about that she's not gonna be able to do something. Lily, you have been a teacher, a woman, a mother, and just learned to focus on what's in the moment, as you, as you have. So, if you've been watching right now, happy seventh birthday, I love you very much, and thank you for being my teacher.
Thank you.
You're wearing the first bullshit hat for the show. Um, you know, as, as she's talking about Lily, I'm thinking about the mother that Tara is, as she balances her career and balances raising a family, and balances dealing with Chris Gerber. Not easy, but I will say the same thing about all mothers, especially my own wife, who's mothered my four kids, that I could not do anything without. She is absolutely the mother of the world, my kids. She's the first person to go to, to say anything to, and that is a relationship that she has built with my children that I am so very proud of. She does it while, when we first got married, she was basically, we had my thirty-year-old in nineteen ninety-two, and he was, she was going to school full-time at St. John's University and working full-time, and I was working midnight to pay for that portion of it. And somehow, we made it pay. So to all the mothers in Woodbury, I wish you all a very happy and blessed Mother's Day. And on that note, here in Go Further Business, or comments received, can I have motion a second to adjourn this meeting? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next village meeting will be held on May twenty-fifth, starting at seven thirty, and there is a bulk load of.
Public area.
Public areas. So bring food, bring food.